It's six o'clock and I'll call the meeting to order. If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Our gracious fathers, we come before you this evening. It is often easy to come in a situation like this and pray for the care and protection of those who are guiding this meeting and those that serve the city, police, fire, public workers, administrators. But Lord, tonight, I just, I want to remember their friends and family. For Lord, all of us, from time to time, have stuff that's going on and our friends and family, and it bothers us. And so, Lord, I just ask that you would be with their friends, their families, and the circumstances of their life, give them encouragement and strengthen them. And then, Lord, I was informed tonight and told that one of the leaders in one of the departments passed away, Tom Strobel. So, Lord, we pray for his family. We pray that you would help them through this difficult time of grieving for a loved one. And, Lord, I know that many here are his friends and know him and care for him, and so, Lord, we pray that you'd be with them as well. So, Lord, just be with this council, be with this city, be with those who lead and serve, protect, and be with those who have great needs that are here this day. And, Lord, I pray and ask what I do in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Crowthers. Michael, if you'll take the role, please.
Councilman Marcos?
Here.
Councilman Blevins?
Here.
Councilman Schlock?
Resident.
Councilman Valerius?
Here.
Councilman Lloyd?
Here.
Pro Tem Lally?
Here.
And Mayor Gail McLeod?
Here.
We have a quorum, ma'am.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marcos. Any actions or changes?
Can I separate licenses and permits to number three?
Request of them made to separate item B three from the consent agenda.
Sure.
Do we take a motion on that?
Well, you don't have to. We can just adopt it as amended and separate it.
Okay. Then may I have a vote to approve the agenda as amended? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of April 11?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Blevins.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lally. Any corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Organizational business.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, residents of Vail Park. Number of updates here with projects going on here in the city of Vail Park. Rosedale Boulevard reconstruction project. Hard rock concrete has replaced the concrete on the west side of Rosedale Boulevard from Southfield Road to Harrison Avenue. They plan to pour on Wednesday or Thursday, depending on how the weather is, from Harrison Avenue to just past McLean Avenue. Rosedale Boulevard will be closed at Southfield Road for the duration of this project. Reek Road water main replacement reconstruction project. The water main replacement contractor is scheduled to be, again, mobilizing equipment and materials the week of May 22nd. They will start the project the week, that week, or the week of May 29th. Once that project starts, Reek Road is going to be a little difficult to get past. And then, once they start reconstruction, traffic will be blocked off from that as well as it was just like Rosedale is now. Paris Avenue Water Main Replacement Project. Rico Excavating has installed and tested the new water main on Paris Avenue, and that project goes from Allen Road to the dead end just east of Lawrence Avenue. Today, they started installing the new water services, so they are getting closer to getting that project wrapped up, which then leads us into the next project, which is the Paris Avenue Reconstruction Project, which is Savone Cement, the contractor. They're planning to start installing new storm sewers on Paris Avenue in three weeks. And again, that street is closed to traffic right now, local traffic only, and I think most people are, you know, to get around that to use other streets to get back to Morris and Harlow and Roger and so forth. Concrete section program, Savone Cement will begin this project in June. That work area is going to be heavy in the area of E Course Road to Pinecrest area. Definitely needed over in that area. I know it's going to include Belfour, it's going to include Cortland, and I believe Pine, Philamine, and a couple different sections. Utility repairs, that contractor is also Savone Cement. They're starting making the utility repairs this week. They should be completed two to two and a half weeks, and those projects are throughout the entire city. The retention pound at the DPS facility is ready for the city engineer, C U Rains, to certify. The contractor has planted all the trees and shrubs that were required. They also put down the grass seed and mulch so that it'll be ready to go, and that project can be finalized at that point in time. The concrete gingerbread tot lot was poured two weeks ago, and the safety tiles are scheduled to be installed on Thursday, and that'll finish up the entire project at that point in time. So, that gingerbread tot lot is on, it's on Morris at Harlow, up in the north end of the city. Permanent fence was installed at the Kennedy Park Recreational Hill. So, this is the hill over by, that was created over by Rogers Elementary School in the north end. It's at the Shenandoah and, anyway, it's probably Arlington, Anne Street Arlington, and they installed a permanent fence there. So, when the slutters in the wintertime are using it, they have something to hold on to as they move up the hill. And if you're running up that and you, in the summertime, you need a little bit of help, the fence is there to help you as well if you need that as well. It'll also keep anybody from going off the backside, which leads into a little bit more of a rough growth area. Received your proposed budget this evening. The budget work session is scheduled for next Tuesday at May 2nd at six o'clock. I just want to acknowledge the following employees that reached milestones with the years of service with the city. Cal Carr, Parks and Recreation Department, five years on May 1st, and Ray Bediant, Department of Public Services, he'll have five years, also on May 7th. And then, a bit of sad news here. Bob Katie has informed us that he is retiring effective Thursday. He started here with the city of Vail Park in July of 2014. He was brought in by emergency manager Joyce Parker. I believe his role at that point in time was just to help get the audit together for the city, and then he was probably going to be just temporary, temporary job at that point in time. He finally retired a couple of years ago with us, so he lasted a little bit longer than, you know, four or five weeks. And so, Thursday is his last day here. I've known Bob now for 25-plus years. I've worked with him here in the city of Vail Park since 2015. I worked with him in the city of Melvindale for a number of years as well. One of the best finance directors around and really, one of the main people that helped turn the city around here. And he took a lot of chances that a lot of people don't know behind the scenes. I sat with him numerous times when we were over in the old temporary city hall at 16630 Southfield, and I thought he was absolutely crazy when he came up with some of the ideas that he was proposing. They worked out, and we're in a much better position financially today because of him. I think we owe him a bit of gratitude. So, Thursday is his last day. He'll be heading down to Florida for another job, and so, we now have a place to go in Florida if you want to visit him. So, we do, I would certainly miss him. He's been a friend of mine for a lot of years.
I have a question, please. The tot lot, we have, I'm sorry.
First, a motion to accept and file.
Oh, sorry.
The administrators' report?
Motion.
Motion.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Blevins, supported by Mr. Marcos. Comments or questions?
I'm sorry. I lose track of the procedure sometimes. The gingerbread tot lot, that's one of, what, 19 parks in the city? Is that correct?
Yes.
Right? Approximately, how many have been completely redone in the past several years? What, 16 of them, 17?
Yeah, in various stages. I think there's four left that need to be.
Four left.
To go through. And then, we've had, this will be the fourth one with the safety tiles.
Right.
Which is a great asset, but it's expensive.
Yeah, this.
We've used block grant for Pump D W plus $200,000. We've used block grant, C D B G block grant for a Kennedy that was $200,000. This project here was Wayne County Grant. I believe it was $160,000. And we also did Brighter Rabbit.
Right.
And I believe that one was probably about $160,000.
Okay.
This is not the kind of equipment you can just run to Costco or BJ's or Sam's Club and pick up.
I just want to make everybody aware of it, of the cost involved and how many parks we have and how many we have redone. So, thank you.
Mr. Blevins?
Any updates on the flags and the lights?
Yeah, there made some progress there to actually find the circuit to turn off the light that was flipped that they have a problem with, but I don't have anything additional from that. We do have the light on the sign now working, so we are making some progress, but we'll look at a couple of different options here. I even was looking at, could we light it up from the existing poles or in the parking lot? Just, you know, with a light that way, one option.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Now, we come to public comments. You are limited to four minutes of speaking. Just want to have your name and the street on which you live. We do not want to have your full address, and all we ask is that you be civil in your comments on keeping in mind that this is not a Q and A session. So, public comments are open.
My name's Thomas Rebo. I live on Ray Street. Do any one of yous listen to the council meeting on TV? How many, how much volume you have to turn up to card and to watch it? And I can't hear that good myself, but I have my TV at roughly 20, and I got to turn it up to 100. And I don't think it's my TV. And we're paying for this? We're paying not to hear it. And a lot of times, too, it looks like you gentlemen do not talk into your mics, and it just, you just can't hear nothing. And then, when you do talk amongst each other, you have your mics off, the people can't hear what you're talking about. It could be important that people want to hear, not just amongst yourselves. Yes, in the meeting here, meeting room, yes, you can hear it. I can hear you better now than I can on my TV. And this is on Comcast as well as WOW. They're both the same. Not one is any different. You did clear up your clarity of the pictures, because you can see who's who now, instead of all ghosts. And then, that's it on that part. Are they going to do anything on Regina of repairing the road between Rosedale and the city of Lincoln Park? Because if anybody has driven down that road, you, I guess you almost lose your teeth almost on that road. That thing is asphalt, it looks like, in that, but it's in bad, bad, bad shape. And that's it, what I got to say. I hope we can get the volume up.
Thank you.
And people talk into their mic.
Could you please see Tom Murray? Tom, can you raise your hand? If you see the gentleman raising his hand, he'll help you out with that last question.
He's in the back.
In the back?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First of all, I just want to say thank you to you for fixing a problem that we've had for years, and that is that intersection at Roosevelt, E Course, and Allen. I think that's been just a great thing you all did, and I understand the mayor was real instrumental in that, so thank you very much. Along those lines, I just wondered, is there a plan to, I thought that intersection at Allen and Wick was done about the same time, but there's a lot of cracks in that, in that asphalt. I just wonder if there's a plan, now that we have those done, to make sure they, those cracks get filled. I was up in Ferndale, I think, a week or two ago, and they're, you know, filling their cracks with all their new stuff there, and I just, it'd be great to see us do that. So, that would be a great thing in a number of ways, especially up on E Course Road, too, which that road isn't too old, but it's got a lot of cracks in there. The other thing I just wondered about is, and you could maybe address it sometime, I hear that the Lions are thinking about moving out of the city, and it sure would be, see, would be great for us to see the city really work hard with them to keep them here in Allen Park.
My name is Angela Disante. I live on McLean. This is in regards to the proposal regarding the Dollar Show that's been, being torn down and the plans that we're all are just learning about. I just think that we need to have more input as citizens as to what we want there. You know, grass and trees would be a very inexpensive alternative to an amphitheater and a farmer's market. We think that the people of Allen Park can find a better use for that, maybe a few picnic tables for takeout food and family gatherings. It may help, help to establish the restaurants and businesses that remain there. I live on McLean at Park, and my view of the current farmer's market, there's few, very few farmers, few customers, and it seems to have very little money changing hands. Even Eastern Market, where I have shopped weekly for years, has been struggling the past few years to keep farmers coming. Eastern Market receives much of its funding from grants. We don't think that a farmer's market is viable here at all. So, a park-like setting would have minimal maintenance costs and relieve a bit of runoff to our storm system, our storm sewers. I'd also like to mention that Duda Park, which is a few blocks away from our home, is the most used park in Allen Park. It is so welcoming with its beautiful trees, benches, picnic tables, and of course, play equipment. It's pathetic the way our other parks look, but there's so few trees. The one at the corner of Champagne and whatever that is, that's, that's big. It has a lot of trees. It's not real welcoming, though. So, I think our parks are in pretty bad condition. So, besides the cost of building the farmer's market and the amphitheater, we have to think of the expenses of demoing them if, in a few years, it has decided to tear it out for any reason. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dennis Hayes. I'm a resident at Quanta Avenue. As you know, I've sent you all a series of comments about this project just aforementioned. I think this woman did an able job explaining some of it. What concerns me, however, having sat in one of those chairs years ago, is that this council and this administrator, I've been through several administrators, don't seem to have any say-so or any guts to stand up and say, who, who came up with this plan? Who came up with this plan? It shows up here last week. You have a DPS study session where apparently it was unveiled at the last minute of that meeting. I don't know who worked on it. I don't think, most of you don't know who worked on it. I've heard that from, anecdotally, from people, that the council didn't know it was a surprise to them. That's not how you run a representative government. And I, I, I hold some of you accountable. Mr. Schlock, I point to you. You represent, you want to be transparent, and you want to have communication. I don't see it. You, you and I had an exchange on Facebook. You said you were shocked that I would think that this was a done deal. I wouldn't be shocked at all that it was a done deal. It was on the agenda. It was a consent agenda. It was voted on, even though a week before is when they submitted the thing that you voted on the week after. Because Mr. Kibby said in that very mean, we submitted it last Wednesday, and then you come the following week and you vote on it. How do you vote on something after the fact? In corporate law, counselor, I would sound, that sounds like an ultra veris act, you know? You do something that you don't have authority to do. This body makes the decisions, but they're not having the opportunity to make the decisions, and I'm very concerned about that. I don't want a council that's going to hide the ball. When I, the years I was on council, we fought. Our meetings sometimes took three hours, and then we were, we were in the throes of a lot of trouble, as you remember. But we fought things out. We asked questions. We beat a dead horse if we had to. We did what we had to do. Now, I want to say also, on a positive side, I want to thank Matt. Matt and I don't agree particularly on the, on the matter, on the, you know, the result of it. Dan, also. Charles, we had exchanges with emails, couple, three of them, and I felt like, you know, okay, at least you had enough respect to respond. The rest of you, I don't think responded to my email that I sent you the week before I submitted this material. So, I'm asking you, I'm imploring you to look through it. It may not be all 100% accurate. I don't know, because you certainly don't know. None of us know. That's the problem. We need to have a public hearing, get the input of everybody in this city about, before we make a massive decision like that. We're building something in an area that might have been redeveloped. I don't know if that redevelopment would have happened, but it doesn't look like you even tried. Early on, it sounded like they were considering doing something, housing, retail, whatever. I was talking to a colleague of mine, a neighbor of ours, one of our fellow citizens, who said, it would have been nice to have some high-end retail with maybe a couple lofts on top. This thing's not going to pay any taxes. That theater used to pay about $18,000 a year in taxes. What do we got now? That's four years, we've lost, what, $72,000 in revenue? And you want to build a farmer's market that will produce no revenue and will only increase costs for our maintenance and upkeep? Police coverage, all that kind of stuff? So, please, do us a favor and do your job properly. Let's, let's not make any more of these decisions behind the scenes. Don't let the administrator make a decision, because administrators, they tend to get complacent over the years. They get that power built up, and they figure, I got a bunch of guys that'll go along with whatever I say. I like Mark, but the point is, he's slipping into that pattern that we saw over the years. So, let's not let that happen. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Kathy Milberg, I live on Park. I sent everybody, you know, a list of my concerns, and I hope that you'll look at them. I would really like to encourage a public forum where folks are invited in and you explain what, how this came to be. Moving here, we moved here just prior to the whole collapse of the city. Within the first year we lived here, we lost $48,000 value on our home and went through all this stuff. And I personally, you know, rolled up my sleeves and came to the table and helped do a lot of work with the visioning plan and things like that to make things better. And each administration, it's gotten better. And I was so disappointed because it felt like such a betrayal that this body here has, in my experience, has been one of the best councils and mayor that I've experienced here. And so, when I see on the TV with no advance notice, Allen Park's going to do this, and it just was kind of mind-blowing that there was no discussion and there was a lot of objection to the fact that it was being compared to the, to the studio, you know, to the Jimmy Lifton debacle. But, but if you, if you look at it objectively from our point of view, where is the development plan? Where is, any due diligence would give you a sound, you know, financial plan for this property, not, we're going to spend $13.6 million on a project that's not going to bring a penny into this, that'll draw people away from the business district and rob them of parking and everything else. And it just is just crazy. And then, the renderings of it, you know, and if you look closely at the renderings of it, I don't know who did them, but, you know, like, there's a silhouette of a cat on a roof, and there's a car with a light pole through the hood of it. And you sent that out to the press, you know, and I just thought, oh my God, they're going to go, here we go, and that Allen Park, aren't they something? Okay? Not only destroying our image, that, that I see people here who have fought, you know, to come back from what we were to where we're at, and then to present this money-eating crap plan. So, I, I just would really love to see a public forum and let people, you know, know the truth about where the money is. When was this grant sent out or made available? And how long did it take? Who worked on it? And it was, and where is this money coming from? So, in, in part, there may be some good explanations. It may be that you have to do a site, you know, the demo and the treatment of that site, and that you're leveraging an additional five mil from that if that was the match. Nobody will say what the match was, nothing. It's all a big secret and ooh, ooh, you know, like a mouse, you know, a cat coming out with the mouse at a cocktail party, like, ooh, boy, look what I did. You know, it, it's really, it's really discouraging. So, at any rate, I would really encourage that we have a public forum so that people can learn what, how this all came to be. And I think if we even have a vote on it, because I don't believe you'd get a lot of, you know, support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Mark McIntosh from Michigan Boulevard, and I, I'm here because of the theater issue. And I agree with the very lovely lady sitting back there, the first speaker, that, you know, maybe some grass and a, and a couple of picnic tables might be a good idea for the interim while the, the, the issue is opened up to the public with an open meeting and several of them, because we have been watching for years since we moved. One of the main reasons we moved to Allen Park was because of the downtown area. And as we've sat there, we've watched the bank close, we've watched, you know, the businesses just seem to disappear. And the cultural hub of Allen Park was the Dollar Show, you know? So, I'm joking here. You know? I mean, we loved being able to walk over there and see a movie. And I'm sorry it's gone, like everybody else, I'm sure sorry it's gone, but I think that you folks would have a lot better chance of being re-elected and getting support from people for, for everything you do. You know, I talk about you all the time, and I complain, but this issue, I'm joking again. But this issue is something we were really looking forward to, to see what we could do to get maybe a little something we wanted done, rather than, I, I feel like, what the hell? You know? So, I wish you'd opened it up and meanwhile, put some grass there. It's very easy to demo grass, you know, and I'm sure you could do it for well under $100,000 while you open the issue up to the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Lynn Kettlehut. I live on Cortland, and I appreciate getting the time to talk. I love what a lot of people brought to the table today. There's a lot of good brains out there. And this brings me back 20 years ago when we were in trouble, and everything was kind of done on the, you know, download. We didn't know what was going on, and all of a sudden, we owed how many millions of dollars in this property that we were going to make a theater? Well, that worked out great, and we're out of it now. So, well, we're way closer than we were. My point is, now here we are again. I'm tired of hearing about plans from the News Herald. I'd like to hear it from our council, and I'd like, you want to talk about being open and transparent, let's do that. Let's actually, you know, not just talk the walk, but walk the walk. I don't know how this property was marketed, but I've been in real estate 35 years. There was never a sign out. It was never on the multi-list. I have no idea how this property was marketed. When it first came up, I talked to several people. I said, give the property away. It's costing you almost $20,000 a year and just lost tax revenue. Give it to a developer as an incentive to get it to go. And there's plenty of ways our city attorney can make that work, but we didn't do any of that, and we let it rot and mold, and it was, you looked in the windows, there were dead birds and rats that you could see right through the windows. It was horrible. So, we need to be more open. right through the windows. It was horrible. So, we need to be more open. Everybody's pretty much said that. There's no hurry to get this done. There's absolutely no rush. There's no pressure on anybody. So, let's bring it out so everybody won't be complaining again that, "Well, we did this." When they were going to try to sell it, my big push was, "Let's put some retail or restaurants on the main floor and put some condos on the second level and keep that lobby," because that was one of the major things that we wanted to do, was keep the beautiful Allen Park thing. So, that would have been a great entrance for the retail restaurants and go upstairs to the condos. I'm sure they would sell. There's a big demand in Allen Park for condos. There's only eight houses on the market today in the whole city, believe it or not. It's definitely a great time to sell stuff. So, we need to do that. We need to get rid of that property off of our backs and get some tax revenue coming in, and that's my opinion. Those bricks, I'd like to see if we could grab about a hundred or two hundred of them and sell them to make money for the historical commission, you know, probably five or ten bucks. We'd take a picture of them in the parking lot so they'll go, "Oh, wow, I got a piece of Allen Park history." Because that thing was there for eighty years. So, just a couple of silly ideas. I think you guys have a lot of work to do, and we're part-time. You know, you got jobs and you got your life. But just blows me away that whenever a big real estate deal comes up in Allen Park, no one approaches, and I'm not saying I'm the greatest Realtor in the world, but ask an opinion of somebody in the business, you know? That's how you get things done right. And I'm not a big developer. I'm not the genius, but I know who to appoint you to. And it would just, you guys don't have to be afraid. I'm friends with most of you guys, you know? And I think we're all doing a good job if we do it as a we. So, let's open it up. Let's have some public hearings. There's no rush, okay?
Thank you.
Hi, Nancy Nick Pinecrest Avenue. So, I understand that you want to take that property and do something with it to bring people to the city of Allen Park. I do understand that concept. What I don't understand is the plan that I saw. Okay, I know you guys have been talking about an ample theater for about a year, because I've been to your meetings and I've heard about that. I didn't think it was concrete. And then when I look at this plan, and I've asked several of you guys, is there heat in that building? Some of you guys say yes, some of you say no. And I'm looking at it, and there's so much glass in there. The garage doors are full of glass all along the side. So, if it doesn't, if it does have heat, you're going to be losing a lot of heat and your heating bill's going to be high. I work in a building, it's historic, and we lose a lot of heat through our glass. We have a lot of breakage and to clean all that glass. And then there is no parking. And I've not, no one's told me, like, how many vendors you want to put in there. Is it thirty? Is it twenty? How many? You don't have the parking around there. So, what I would say is, like, most of the other people out here, is can you hold off? Can you take some of the money from a grant or wherever and just prop the property, you know? Get your sewers in there. Get, put your lines under the ground, like I know you guys want to, but prop it. Maybe take a year, have, you know, a town hall meeting, talk to the residents and see, you know, what they would like. Did anybody talk to the residents that live around there, right there, on that block? I mean, with all that sound and everything, you know? How many people, I mean, how many people would you expect coming in? You know, because an ample theater, from what I saw, looks pretty big, you know, to have. And what, you know, usually I think our sound is eleven o'clock you turn it off? I mean, I don't know. But that's my concern. And I know when we first got that building, I worked for Parks and Recs then, and it was given to Parks and Recs. I was called into a meeting and talked with my director, called me in, and said, "Hey, Nancy," because I work, and I have for fifteen years, with a lot of events. And where I work, we make eight million a year we bring in. So, he said, "Hey, what would you do?" And so, we talked about it. I wrote him up a whole list of everything I would have. We talked about putting a theater in there, twenty, two-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred-seat theater, and all the different programs that we could bring in. So, what I was told back then, when we first got it, and I went through it, that on the main floor, there would be like a small theater, there would have been a restaurant coming in with a liquor license so that people could come in, go to a show, and then, and be able to eat there. And then there would be twelve lofts above. And then there would be a back entrance where the people in the lofts could come up and there'd be a parking lot for them. So, I don't know what happened to that, that plan, and how this one developed. But I, like the rest of them, would like to say, "Hold off. Maybe you could just prep the property, take a year, and figure out a better plan than what you have now." Thank you.
If no one further is coming up, we will close the public comments and move on to the consent agenda. This evening, we've had item number B3 removed from the consent agenda. I can have a motion to approve the consent agenda, but with the direct seller solicitor permit being removed.
Point of information also, Mayor?
Yes.
We will be doing, adding to the minutes, although it's not on the agenda, because of the construction of Rosedale may still be going during the street fair run. We are going to amend the language to say pending final route approval by the police chief. So, I just want to note that, because it's not on the agenda as such.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It has carried, and now we will come to the direct seller solicitation permit. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
By Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lally. Comments or questions?
On the direct seller, I will probably, I'm sure, oh, no, I'm done with direct selling and flyers coming onto the house and guys throwing them on my driveway and I snowblurry them and throwing them on my porch or in my flowers or in my bushes. And then finally, after seeing my no solicitor sign, coming back and picking them up, everybody might just feels the same way about it. And if it was a local business, I might consider it. This is not a local business. If they want to get our attention, pick the mails, do direct mail. I'm fully against it. So, just my opinion.
Any other comments?
To the chair.
Mr. Lloyd?
I just want to say, as always, I value Mr. Marcos and his role up here. It's something that, coming into this, would have, you know, most likely gone through and approved. But I think that Councilman Marcos makes some valid points. And I think that the question that we have to ask ourselves is, is what is the benefit to the citizens of Allen Park that approving this permit does? I think that most of us, when we need work done, we have a number of places that we reach out to. So, it's my opinion that this is not something that is beneficial to the citizens. And as Mr. Marcos said, if they would like to, there's other ways for them to solicit business within the city of Allen Park.
Any other comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, excuse me.
Start over.
Please, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I have two no, or two yeses, Blavens and Schleck.
No one.
You want to do a roll call?
Might as well.
This is for the issuance of direct seller permit number one dash two thousand twenty-three, Power Home Remodeling Home Improvements. Shall this permit be granted? We had a motion by Lloyd, supported by Lally. Shall it, shall the company receive the permit? Councilman Blavens?
Yes.
Pro Tem Lally?
No.
Councilman Lloyd?
No.
Councilman Marcos?
No.
Mayor McLeod?
No.
Councilman Schleck?
No.
And Councilman Valerius?
No.
All right, the noes have it. That permit fails. Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Before we move on to resolutions, I do want to make one comment so that our residents are aware. Several years ago, we had a resolution that said that any permits that are approved will be posted on the city's website. So, if anyone comes to your door and you have a question as to whether or not they have been licensed to do business in the city, please take a moment to look at the website. If they are not on that website, feel free to contact the authorities, because they should not be there at eight o'clock at night pounding on your door to sell you something if they have not been permitted. Thank you.
Well, and
Yes.
Through the chair?
Yes.
A lot of people, when they come to their house, it's in the evening, and they'll wait the next day and call the clerk's office to report them. I can't enforce it. Like, people think, "Call Mike, he'll stop them." Believe me, I, no comment on any of this company, but I'm not a fan. But I can't enforce any of it. So, you're not a bother. Call the police non-emergency number and say, "There's a solicitor in my neighborhood. Do they have a permit?" And we do notify the PD, and a lot of times, they'll text me, "Hey, Ms., is this..." "Yes, no, go get them," you know, "Kick them out, whatever." So, just call the police, not, don't call 911, police non-emergency number. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Now, we move on to resolutions. Our only resolution this evening is to approve the closure of White Avenue next to the community center and the use of the community center parking lot on August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three, from noon to eleven P.M. for the Taste of Downriver event, pending final approval from the police chief.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Marcos. Any comments or questions? Would we like to review about the Taste of Downriver?
Yeah, I would just touch on that real quick. The Taste of Downriver will be August fifteenth, Tuesday, August fifteenth. One of the sponsors is the Allen Park Downtown Development Authority, and it'll be posted here at the community center parking lot along White Street if that's approved tonight. And I don't know all the details on that. Ben, is it twenty-five dollars per person? So, you can buy a wristband or something like that, and you can come in and taste a bunch of different food options. I believe it's twenty-five dollars, and it's actually sponsored by, the main sponsor is the Southern Wayne County Regional Chamber.
And I think this is the first time it's going to be held here, and they are already talking about bringing it back again. So, something to look forward to. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. You, it has passed. And now we come to council comments. On this evening, we will start with Mr. Lloyd.
All right. So, generally speaking, I like to organize my thoughts before I begin here, but I've got a lot of notes to digest. So, please, please bear with me. I want to start off with disagreeing with Mr. Hayes. I'm going to come back and I'm going to agree to it with him in a moment. So, stick with me. And I disagree with the statement that this is not how representative democracy works, because I think that this is precisely how representative democracy works. And I want to let everybody in this room know that I am very, very appreciative of their feedback, because this body does not have that information, as has been said many times by the people that I am sitting up here, is that we are residents within this city, and we have our opinions and we have our own experiences. But I don't know what it's like to live on the claim and to go through the experience that you have, or, or the, I'm sorry, I believe that that was you, Mrs. DeSante, all right? So, I don't, I don't know what that experience is. And so, your opinions here are very much appreciated. And I want to say very, very much from the outset, that everybody in this room, everybody in this room, including our city employees, everybody up on this council, everybody in this audience, we want what is best for the city of Allen Park. And I know that that is not something that is always easily done, all right? But, and I know that it's not always clean and neat, but the way that it is done is by having these kind of conversations. I agree with Ms. Milberg. I very much think that there should be, if, clearly, clearly, there is apprehension within this room as to the plan that is going on. And so, I do not think that any plan should be executed without the citizens of Allen Park being able to have full knowledge of what it is that we are entering into and what it is that will be going in that space. Now, as far as what will go into that space, reasonable people can differ as far as that opinion. I am, I'm a huge fan of green space. I have a dog. I have a five-month-old son at home, and I want him to grow up in a city where he has the opportunity to go and sit underneath the tree, to enjoy a picnic, to do those things. But I, and I think that it is very important that we have those kind of conversations. I know that there's a lot of really great ideas out there, as far as what goes in there. And to Mr. Kettlehut's point, there is a lot of excellent ideas, and there's a lot of people that have different opinions as to what is going on here. And so, I agree wholeheartedly that we should take those things into consideration. Now, one thing that, and forgive me for not having the specific facts in front of me, but I promise you that when the time comes, we will have this conversation and I'll have the specifics. The reason that this is coming about at this particular time comes back to this, the American Rescue Plan. Many of you may have followed this in the news. So, what we have had is the federal government has basically given out a large amount of money to states and municipalities around the country. So, there's money that's coming in at the state level, there's money that's coming in at the county level, there's money that's coming in at the city level. So, we have money that is coming to us from the federal government for the American Rescue Plan. That is money that's going for the city of Allen Park. And we already have every dollar of that, we already have going to things like police vehicles, so that we make sure that we get into a rotation so that our police vehicles are functioning and that we make sure that our officers are safe when they're on the road, renovating the sign out front, so that we're able to more clearly communicate with our citizens and be able to represent ourselves in a certain way. Those dollars are going towards, that's going down the list of things that we need. This money that we are looking, that we are looking to use at that particular corner, that money is coming to us from the county. And our fellow municipalities have already started to take their slice of that particular pie. Southgate is receiving a large amount of money, five million, to renovate the Southgate Tower. We have communities in Romulus, around Wayne County that have already taken that piece of that. So, what this council is doing, and more specifically what this administration is doing, is making sure that the citizens of Allen Park are able to get their share of that money that is coming to our fellow citizens. Now, all of that being said, we, we have not committed to anything to the extent that we have sought. These are ideas that we are putting out there so that we can have these conversations. And I, again, I understand the apprehension that's out there. And I, and I, to Mr. Kettlehut's point again, I understand being upset about learning this in the News Herald. But the reason that you learned, because you learned about this in the News Herald, is precisely why we have this audience here today and why we are having this conversation. That is, that is how, in the United States of America, the media is supposed to work, is that you hear something that you're going on, you dislike it, and we are gonna, and we're gonna have the conversation. So, I understand the apprehension. I grew up during the crisis that we had with Hollywood 48101. For those of you who knew my father, that was a very big point for him. That was something that I grew up hearing about. And I promise you, we do not want to repeat that. And a point that I want to agree with, with Mr. Hayes, is that the city of Allen Park should not be in the business of business. We are not, so, anything that we were to put there, we need to make sure that we have a private development company coming in to developing that. And on some extent, that's going to lose control as to what we're going to put in there. I love the idea. I love the idea of having a bar in the bottom with a liquor license and retail. It's honestly, it would be great. Councilman Valerius and I were talking about how we would love to have a brewery there, all right? That's a fun little hobby that we can have. However, we need to have a private business that is willing to come in and do that. And so, it is really important that whatever we do, whatever is decided that goes there, is something that is right is something that is right for the city of Allen Park so we don't end up with another strip mall. We don't end up with more pharmacies. I think that that is something that we can all agree that that's not what the city of Allen Park wants. And if we were just to put it out to open development, then we lose control over that parcel of land, which is something that is at the centerpiece, the center of the city. And so what... Let me just tell you again, we need to have these discussions, but let me tell you why I think that that piece of land is so important and what I would like to see there, is that that piece of land represents a piece of social infrastructure for our city. It is a place that potentially could be something that combines our downtowns, okay? So right now, we have that wedge, so we have that interconnectivity, and we have a place where our citizens are able to come together, are able to socialize with each other, and make this a community instead of just being a city. And so whatever ends up being there, I promise you that I am going to work my absolute hardest to make sure that that is going to be something that is going to glue this city together and is going to make us a stronger, better place to live. Again, thank you. Thank you so much for coming in because if you do not come into these meetings, if you do not tell us these opinions, then we are not able to act on the will of the people. And that, that is what representative democracy is. And that is something, that is the reason that I ran for this, that is the reason why I turned in my ballots to Mr. Mizzi at 3:44 today, all right? Just under the limit. So thank you again for doing that. I appreciate you all. I promise you, if I don't have the answers tonight, I will find them for you. And just so I don't forget, Thomas, I'm so sorry, I forgot your last name. I know that this is a complaint that we have had about the volume. I think it's to that same point of representative democracy. It is essential that our citizens... My grandma's 98 years old. She's not able to make it to every single... She's going to be 98 this Thursday. She's not able to make it to all these council meetings. It is absolutely crucial that our citizens are able to know what this body is doing. So we will find a solution to that. Thank you so much for your opinion. Thank you and good night.
Thank you.
I got to follow that?
Yeah, you got to follow that.
I find it hard to believe that anyone has an issue hearing Councilman Lloyd speak. His volume is always at a 10 or 11. But echoing his thoughts, again, I thank everyone that came up here to talk, okay? Your opinions matter. Your thoughts matter. Your concerns matter, as they should, okay? They are not falling on deaf ears. Again, I've said this in the past, it is a plan. Plans change, and they probably will, and they very well might. But just like any plan, it can and might change. This is a plan. It's all it is right now, okay? You know, the way it was represented and the way it came out was, you know, I could see it being a little bit deceiving in regards to that, but it is a... Right now, it is what it is, and what it is is a plan, okay? So I just want to clarify that. Again, I wish our meetings were like this every time we met. I wish citizen comments were as spirited and open and just like the conversations that we have when you come up here, you voicing your opinions and thoughts, as Councilman Lloyd mentioned, is... Gives us insight into the community. We can't read minds, okay? When Mr. Hayes talked about the dialogue I had with him, I'm open to answering as many questions as I can and will. If I don't have the answer, I'll try to get an answer. That's why I'm here, okay? I want to be as open and transparent as possible. If I don't know something, I'm not going to blow smoke. I'll admit that I don't know, and I'll try my best to find out. But I'm not going to shy away from conversations with a gentleman like Dennis and lie or speak untruths about a situation, okay? And the dialogue that he had, just like when he came up here, we're not all going to agree. But it's the dialogue that instigates that conversation and that, you know, for change and for things to actually happen. So again, I... There's not much more I could say after listening to Dan talk for 20 minutes or whatever, yeah, 30. But I echo his thoughts about this process, okay? And again, I hate the comparison and I hate the thought process of saying, "Oh, here's our next Hollywood 48101." As long as I'm sitting up here, I'm not going to allow that to happen, even though I may only be one voice, but I'm going to do everything I can to prevent that from happening. And with that, again, I thank everyone that showed up tonight and came up and talked to us, and I appreciate your time and everyone. Have a good night. Bye you.
Thank you, Matt. Mr. Slack?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I have to follow Dan and I have to follow Matt, but I'm going to rubber stamp everything they pretty much said. And I agree, and I'm going to go with what you said, Mr. Hayes. You said sometimes when you were on council, you had to beat that dead horse. That's what we're here for. This was a plan. This was not final, and that's when I said, you said you saw this on the media. It seemed pretty done me. And that's why I said, "Sir, since when on council did you ever say something definitively without it being definitive?" It's a plan. Nothing more than that. We had an idea. This is an idea that we've been talking here and there. People forget two things. One, we went through COVID-19, and there was a big chunk of things that have happened at developers. We welcome any developer who wants to come in and address ideas and concerns, or I love this idea. And I said from the very beginning, "I want public forum. We will have a public forum and opportunities addressed." We don't have... Ms. Milberg, I saw your list of questions and questions of what it can be, this and the whole. A lot of these are unanswered because we don't have the answer. That's why I want public discussion, public concern. And I will be open and transparent, and I am being open and transparent. I'm welcome to talk to you on the phone. I'm welcome to meet you at a coffee shop. I'm welcome to meet you at my front door if it's convenient. I have a small family, then I want to be here, and I want to raise that family so they have something to remember. And when you look at that central downtown area that I look, that I see, that Dan sees, it's a core part of our community. And a special note that Dan didn't mention, so here's something a little different to point out. This theater project and this project is in the DDA. That means tax revenue is funneled through the county through the TIF plan. So there's a lot that we go for there. We have to look at what's the DDA and what's the city. There is a big difference there that I think with our new director of the DDA is stretching limits of what we could do and what we can inform the public of what that is. We need to look at all these aspects of the city and bring this great city together. We're a community. We are a community. And what this project we see up here and why we approved to bring it to the county is exactly what Dan said because we see other communities asking for their chunk. So how would it feel if we sat back and did nothing and asked for no chunk of money? You would say, you'd be back here in Chambers saying, "Why didn't you ask for any money?" We simply asked for $5 million, and then we're going to address it. There most likely might be a match. And that's when we're to address it. Do we want to take this match? Do we want to throw this money away? Do we want to take this money? There's nothing definitive that says we absolutely have to have this. Now, I did see the renderings and I saw the pavilion myself. I saw that was huge. We made continuous laughter about the bird that was looking flying in some of the projections. So there were some funny things about the plan, but again, it's a plan. There's nothing set in stone of what to do about it. I mentioned myself, I did not personally like the gay. I liked to see it replicating the marquee if this is the plan we would go forward with. So there are so many possibilities what we could do with this. Nothing is set in stone. I want to hear input. We will hear input. As the Chair of the Economic Development Committee on the City, I said when we had a meeting that we will have public comment. We will have meetings. That at that meeting that we had, the snowy day last year or so, I presented everything that I had in front of me. There was nothing that I had that I did not present. If anyone wants to see, let's talk about it, discuss. I want to continue to have that discussion, whether it be here, will it be at a coffee shop, whether it be at that open forum, will it be... We are... I'm available and transparent and want to talk to you about anything and everything about this project because even though I wasn't here during Hollywood 4811, I was a resident still of Detroit, Michigan, I definitely don't want to see that happen, come back here. I heard the horror stories, to be frank, and that would be the worst possibility that I would want to see come to the city. You know, I planted roots here with my family, my two boys and my wife. We plan to stay here. We love this city. And we want to see it grow, and I feel with this plan that could bring that possibility. But if that's not the plan, like Mr. DeSantis said, maybe some trees and benches, maybe that will be the plan. But let's look at all possibilities. This is one that we looked at that may be a little more progressive. And you mentioned that Eastern Market. Well, there may be that not, but I see the good possibility. One thing I see repeatedly, a parking issue pop up. Well, currently, the DDA and other organizations, we have a lot of concerts, and those are currently held in a parking lot. Well, key there is parking lot. You know, you open up that parking, that availability, potentially have them in that pavilion, amphitheater. And again, I heard someone mention the size. I admit that size is huge. And again, it's a plan. It's an idea. We can discuss what we want, what we don't want. I heard comments on Facebook that there's... We are going to have porter potties lined up all through the park. Come on. That's even ridiculous when I heard it. And I will comment on things, but I will address you openly. Call me. I gave you my phone number. I gave you my email address. I give my address. It's all out there. I'm not hiding from you. I'm not in the shadows. I'm not in the box. I don't go home and go in a cave and lock myself down to the next council meeting. Yes, Ms.... Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Milberg.
There's... I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm in order. There's no discussion going. Please finish your comments.
With that being said, I'd be open to hearing comments, and thank you to my fellow persons that came before me and thank you for the rest that will come after. Thank you.
Charles.
Well, first off, thank you finally getting the sign lit up as bright as my shirt or jacket, but you know. Again, I say about the flags in front of City Hall is because as my father was a veteran, he fought for this country, and it was always... I was always known that if a flag is risen during... It's from sunrise to sunset, and if it's layer, it should be lit. That's why I just keep on saying, and thank you, Mark, for the updates. Like I said, I'll keep on saying until it's done, but it's just something personal. I had a resident come up to me after the work session if possibly to look into on Park Avenue, McLean and Regina area right by Zeal and the karate business. If there could be possibly a stop sign put there because of when they have their classes, kids like to run out of the street and it could be a safety issue. Just I just want to bring that to the table as Mark, the resident, came to me for discuss. Please make sure to support the farmer's market. It started last Friday. It goes until the end of October, three to seven, Fridays. I know in the past, we talked about with the TIF plan that we were going to have a couple of meetings a year. I hope we can... It happens with the DDA. And I want to thank again all the volunteers out there, the commissions that they are on. It is... I've been, like I said, the last meeting, I've been going to these meetings forever. I was in the audience with Mr.... When Mr. Hayes was on council, I've seen the city go up and down, turn around, zippity-doo-dah, whatever you want to call it, but it's just one of those... It's... It's one of those things for someone who... I have... I will be listening to all your comments. I have part of the economic development as well. I have read many comments over all the pages that have shared, and it's unfortunate that, again, it just came out of nowhere. My understanding that with the discussion, when we've... When I first got on council, we had a tour of the Dollar Show. Councilman Lloyd and Tony Lally was... We all came and went in there, and the first thing I said was, "No matter what happens, at least half of the city will not agree with any idea." It's... That was the first thing I said because every single thing that a council votes on, even like today, there was a no yes vote for a permit and stuff. So we won't all agree, but I will listen to any suggestions. I've saw many about the parking. I understand about the parking, like the street fair with parking. And I know the last two years, the Historical Commission used that parking lot to fundraise for their commission. Last year was the beautification. I understand that. So yeah, there was... This is a plan. My understanding, what I voted for at the last meeting for the $5 million was to get funds for this project of a plan. $13,000... Sorry, $13 million. It is also for downtown free Wi-Fi, Allen Road landscaping, DDA decorating for streetlights. And there's multiple things that like equals to that $13 million. So this one building is not just the $13 million. It's for estimated $4.5 million. So, and I've said before, where if we were asking for $5 million, we may or may not get the... All of it. It all depends. The last thing, so again, but yes, I will be listening and reading all your comments and take it into consideration of everything. The plan itself, there's things I agree with, some things I'm like, eh, okay, well, we should fix that. The last and final thing is I want to thank Mr. Bob Cady for what he has done over the years for the city. I've, again, gone to many meetings and I totally agree with Mark, what he's said about him, and he will be truly missed. And with him going to Florida, maybe he'll see Doug LaFawn down there at Disney World. But it's... He will be truly missed. And again, I want to thank him so much for what he has done for the city. I also want to thank, I didn't get to... Last meeting, our Treasurer, Marine Armstrong, for being the treasurer for all these years and stuff. And I know she won't be re-running and stuff, but I just want to thank her as well for what she's done. And again, with this election year, with me not re-running or anything, please do your research. And to the candidates that are running, this is what this is about. And to focus on the residents, working for the residents, to Mr. I believe is Lynn that said this was a part-time gig. I personally think it's a full-time gig. Getting calls while I'm at my other job at 2:00 in the morning about things and try to respond in at least a 24-hour reason. But again, I think, again, to the residents, please do your research. And with that, I hope you all have a wonderful couple of weeks. God bless and stay positive. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Mr. Marcos?
Yeah. First, I'd like to extend my condolences in the cities to Tom Strobel family. We lost him this week. Tom's a major force in the community, worked tirelessly for the community, great business, always, always doing something for the city. And I just want to extend our deepest condolences to his family, my mom, and myself. Great person, and he'll certainly be missed. I was once told that I should stop asking... If I keep asking every week that somebody shows up to get people in here, that if nobody shows up, then everything's okay. So today, now we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's more than we've had all year, which is great. I love it. It's crazy. And you know, I want to... A couple of things to address. You know, I heard about the media, you hear it on the media. Of course, the media does not sensationalize anything. We know that. So when you hear it, it's like, oh, because I saw it, but oh my... Wait a minute, that wasn't me. So, when you hear it, it's like, oh, that I saw, oh my, I was, wait a minute, that wasn't me. Um, no, it was funny. Uh, they sensationalize things, they make things sound as rosy as possible. Um, and so, you can take some of that with a grain of salt, and you hear what's going on with these guys, and we're all pretty much in agreement on the same things, uh, about what our thoughts are, and what we, what the input we're looking for. Um, Ms. Milburg, um, every question, I've, I've read this thing before I came in, every question on here could be answered with, for every project, anything that we wanna do. These are valid questions for anything we wanna do here. Um, I, I think that, um, you know, every project, that every plan that we, that is out there, uh, has good and bad. And like they've all said, um, you're not gonna please everybody. You're gonna get forty-nine, fifty-one, you know, ninety-nine percent of the time. So, um, the input is, is well received, believe me. Uh, everybody wants to hear it, I'm glad, we're all glad to hear it. You know, it's, uh, we have been talking about it, and I've only been here, uh, a year and a half, so I don't have the, but I have watched every, uh, every, every, uh, meeting on TV, and I have wow, and I, I.
You can hear it?
And I, yeah, I have, and I have tinnitus. And I can hea- I can hear, I hear everybody but me, that's okay, you don't hear me. Um, I can hear Dan without the mic.
Uh, you don't need it.
Um, but, you know, every plan, every plan has good things and bad things, and it's a matter of coming together and finding out what's what, what's gonna work and what's not gonna work, and what's best for everybody. So, yeah, discussions are coming, no question about it. Um, I'm not gonna beat, again, be, keep beating this thing until, because everybody's gonna talk about it, and I voice in my opinion as of right now. Um, but I do wanna recognize Kyle Carr for five years, with our Parks and Rec outstanding job. He's, he's, works tirelessly in the Parks and Rec, he does a great job. And Ray, in the Public Service Department, five years, thank you very much. Um, I also wanted to recognize Ben Hughes, and I've done it before, and I'll say it again. This guy's done more in the two months he's been on the job than, than anybody has done in four years for the, for the DDA. He is working day and night, he has visits, every business, his businesses, meetings, administration, everything, he has been on top of, everything. He's getting to business before I get to him, and I, and I'm going to business and trying to tell him to go see the new guy, and he's already been there. So, he's, he's on top of the ball, and he's got things moving, he's got things rolling, and I really appreciate all the hard work he's put in. Um, what else? Uh, Tracy, the Lions, yeah, I wanted to, I don't want them to go either. Um, the last I read was they, uh, were putting this decision off till next year sometime, they're looking at either expansion or losing a place, I think you've all read that. Um, they wanna have, uh, more people come to their, uh, practices, they only have room for like five hundred, twenty-five hundred, they want more, whatever it is. So that's a discussion for probably another year from now, which we all wanted to stay here, believe me. So, um, other than that, um, I, I don't have much, much left to say, except for my wacky things of the day. You think I was gonna miss that?
[laughing]
Okay, which one I wanna pick? Uh, it's Red Hat Society Day, School Brise Drivers, School Bus Drivers Day, and very importantly, it's License Plate Day, make sure everybody has their license plates on. And it's National Plumbers Day, and I just paid five hundred dollars to a plumber yesterday, so I, I paid my dues today. Um, and again, appreciate all the comments, appreciate you all coming, and look forward to further discussions. Thank you very much, and good night.
Thank you, Dennis. Councilman Lally.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just very happy to see all these people over here. You really made that Councilman Marcos happy, because he's always wanted, uh, audience, and he got his audience today. Uh, I don't wanna kill the, uh, the thing that's been said today about, uh, the theater or the Dollar Show. And I understand all the people over here, they came up to the table and expressed their opinion. Their opinions matter. But let me tell you something, this project came out to us in a, in a, uh, work session meeting. It was nice, because it was, I, I thought it was a really nice project, but it came out too quick to the public. First of all, we didn't have a plan yet. This was just a drawing that we wanted to do, but it came out, which I guess it's, it's okay, because now you get, you see all the audience here today. But this just was a plan, and I agree with, uh, a lot of you that that project needs to be developed, but we don't know what. Just like, uh, a person came in today and said that it should be a green space. Well, I suggested that a long time ago, but my suggestion was just a green space, okay? But then somebody came up with this idea, and I kinda liked it, okay? But it should have been, it shouldn't have been going out. It, it should never have been published without the citizens' opinion, input. This is just a concept, not a down deal, let's say. We gotta talk about it, you gotta have the, everybody, if they wanna do this, but we don't know if we wanna do this. We could do something else. That's why we sure need the input of the public hearing. We should have a public hearing, whatever this place has done. And like Kettleot said, this is not gonna be done in one day, it's not gonna be done this year. I don't know how long it's gonna be, but we're gonna work on it. And we're gonna work diligently on behalf of the citizens of Ellen Park. Because that's what I, when I came in, in this council, I'm working for the citizen of Ellen Park. I do a lot of things, but I'm working for the citizen of Ellen Park. I'm the voice for the citizens, all these people here are the voice for the citizens. We all working together, no matter who gets in the council. We all gotta work together. I've been in previous councils, I've been working together, but I, I know that we can work together in this great city. That's my speech for that, I don't wanna go too long. But I did go to the Ellen Park, uh, as high school, we had a, the, the, the robotic team had a presentation for the Kiwanis Club. And I'll tell you what, the Ellen Park High School had the presentation for the Kiwanis Club, and off the high school students built robots to compete in statewide events. They divide the group in three, or three places, mechanically, electrically, and pro- programming. They are given different tasks for the robots to perform. They brought their robots and demonstrated how it worked. That was the neatest thing I ever saw. It was just a presentation, I brought my little granddaughter with me, and she just loved it. I think we should bring him over here and let him do a demonstration over here, we could bring more people in here. To make it good. And, uh, and on behalf of, as Kettleot said about the bricks, I'd like to answer your, the, the solution, I think, so far. I think, we got that together with Mark and I, and we decided we should save some bricks for the Vietnam Memorial and beyond, the two memorials. And if we, and if we have enough, we got more there if they wanna save it, enough to do the historical museum too. So we're working on that. Good suggestion, but we already got that before you suggested.
[laughing]
On this note, I say I wanna thank you again for everybody that came up here and spoke, and we need more of yous to come up, and we would like to see you guys over here. The more, better, and then we gets our, our blood circulating, make it, make it, make it good. Okay? All right, thank you very much, God bless.
Mike.
Um, I'd just like to, uh, I'll be real brief here. Um, I'd like to, uh, congratulate Bob Cady on his retirement. Um, I'll never forget, forget when he first came in. We were, we were literally just gone through economic disaster, and he's talking about getting into a, a new City Hall, and shortly after that, a new DPW building, and, oh my gosh, both happened, and neither of them showed up on my tax bill. And honestly, I, I don't think people know, Bob, nobody ever knows the finance director, but he, it was amazing, his optimism, 'cause I've always gone by the adage, you want a negative finance director, like, hey, we'd like to do this, don't have the money. As citizens, that's really what you wanna hear, but, so it made me a little nervous when he said, we should do this, we should do that. But it was so, it all happened, it all happened. So, I'd like to thank him. Um, I'm gonna go into a more somber note here. Uh, I, I tried, so many people I know in the city pass away, it's, it's extremely hard to just keep up with them all and mention every single one, but one I have to, because of her longevity here and her family, is, so everybody knows, um, Mrs. Boomer Kazoo passed away April eighteenth. And anyone who knows about her family, they, they were reeks and theiks, I mean, they go back further than. I remember first meeting her at City Hall, and she would talk about, when she was a little girl, the people who still used horse and carriage, and how down off, um, by Manor, the streets would have troughs for cattle and horses. And you look around, and it's like, oh, so it was a farm, now we're creating green space. But that's just a joke, I'm sorry, but.
[laughing]
But on a serious note, Ms. Boomer did die, and it's, it, it moved, it, it, it gets me into that thing with Zach Merritt at the Historical Commission, getting these people on camera and interviewing them before they all pass on. So, I, I gotta say, I did say to Dave, please, if there's any old photos, please remember the Historical Commission, 'cause again, the Reek Road, that's been around since eighteen, that, that was her family. So I'm sorry, it's just really, watching so many of them go after I just took their stories for granted, i- it's hurting me now, because when people ask me, I'm like, my God, I ignored them three times because they told me the same story. So, I apologize, it just hurts when we truly lose so much history. Anyways, okay, let's jump into elections. Um, today was the deadline for filing for local offices, and we have, I will read everyone who filed as of today and are here. For mayor, and this is in alphabetical order all the way down, for mayor, we have Mr. Lally, we have Mayor McLeod, for clerk, we have me, for Mike Mizzi, I'm sorry, for, for treasurer, Frank Liberati's the only one who filed. For council, we've only have seven people, Gerald Barr Jr., Timothy Ostimer, Nancy Nick, Dan Lloyd, Dennis Marcos, Gary Schleck, and Matthew Valerius. And to be honest, I don't believe in pointing out any type of campaign people, but to those watching that don't see, yes, every one of them are in the room right now, et cetera. Um, I wanna thank everybody who filed. It takes special people to be up here, because a lot of times, when you come voice your opinion, they feel your anger, and, and it's, it's hard not to feel it towards you and take it personal. But after you start talking more, and especially when you explain yourself, you put them more at ease, and there's more of a connection there. When you come up here and attack and attack, you're gonna lose them, but when you, you explain to them very nicely how you felt, you've got every single one of, I wouldn't doubt it, they have ten public hearings now, so.
[laughing]
But jumping back to the election, I'm gonna make it known now, we will be consolidating at the Community Center for this November, okay? There's no August primary, none needed, so it'll be November seventh of two thousand and twenty-three at the Community Center. Now, I also wanna, I'm gonna talk about that, come two thousand twenty-four, you're back at your old precincts, the, the ones you were, but there is gonna be a lot new law changes, okay? And no, they're not Mike Mizzi's decision at all, I follow state of Michigan laws. So, hey, I just voted and they let me do, or I did, it's gonna be completely different, not completely, you're still gonna pull out a ballot, but a lot of the procedures are gonna change from November to, I, I think we're having the February primary this year. So, I'll be slamming, I'll, I'll be putting a lot out there of information, and as I always preach, michigan.gov/vote is filled with information, and if you don't like reading that and like videos like I do, they're, they're, they're actually stepping up into the twenty-first century and making voter-like videos that are not boring and actually entertaining to watch. So, with that, I'd love to, I'd like to thank all of you for coming out tonight. God bless you, and good night.
Thank you, Mike. Lots of things to cover, um, and I'll try and keep it brief. Do appreciate all the feedback, um, that we've received. Um, I just, um, there were a lot of things that I have read and seen over a period of time that I have to tell you, a lot of them already came up in discussion when we were just sitting around chatting about, what'll we do, what'll we do? And as has been pointed out, uh, what was submitted is a plan, and plans can change. Uh, if we don't get the ARPA funding, um, obviously, we'll do something different, and we'll probably have green space for quite some time. With regard to the ARPA, ARPA funding, Wayne County has been going through phases, and the federal government has indicated that ARPA funds must be spent by a specific time or they are going to, uh, claw back. So if, uh, states and counties don't spend that money, the federal government will take it back. Um, based on what we have seen Wayne County awarding for Phase One and Phase Two, they are not awarding for infrastructure, they are awarding for parks, et cetera, et cetera. And so we thought, let's, let's throw that out there. Somebody said, you throw it against the wall and see what sticks. Uh, again, part of the funds, um, as I recall, are going to cover infrastructure on our part, it is budgeted money. Um, this in no way has any resemblance whatsoever to, uh, the prior administration that thought it was a great idea to buy land above assessed value, and, um, have somebody convince them that, uh, we should put up all the money while he, um, got all the publicity. I have to tell you that everybody sitting here has worked very hard to get us where we're at. Um, I've been working on some other projects. As of our last, um, rating for bonds, we are now at a rating of A plus. Okay? Uh, and, and you'll hear this again, because at some point, um, in the not-too-distant future, I will finally do a, a State of the City. At one time, when we had, um, the emergency manager in, we were at B, which was a negative outlook. We are, again, at A plus with a stable, and no one sitting here, particularly our finance and our city administrator, is going to do anything to jeopardize that status, because we wanna continue to move up, we wanna get to a triple A rating. This, we are not borrowing funds for this, we're not gonna put this city in debt for this. I just wanna make that very clear. Also, I wanna make it very clear that in that video, it was not a bird flying, it was a cat. Um, I watched it several times. Um, we were just wanting to see if people were paying attention. Um, I wanna address something else, too. Um, a, a lot of work goes into writing various grants for CDBG and, uh, distressed cities, et cetera, et cetera, a lot of long hours. Um, and when you've got people who are sitting here at eight o'clock at night or nine o'clock at night, still working on them, I, I gotta tell you, you're getting your money's worth. Um, and some time ago, it was felt, uh, by our city administrator that, hey, the council oughta be knowing all the grants that I'm putting in and approving those grants. You know, a lot of time, there's no matches, but he just wanted us to be aware, and so we have put that on the agenda, so that council is aware, we're applying for these. we have put that on the agenda, so that council is aware, we're applying for these grants, some of them may require a match, some of them may not, but this is what's going on, and this is basically what I'm working on. Um, just to clarify some of the information everyone received, this was not on a consent agenda, it was a resolution. Um, I think that's all I have to say on this topic at the moment. Mike, you brought up something, um, about the historical, because I think we've been thinking about that, and you mentioned, um, Mrs. Boomer Kazoo's passing. Um, for those of you who may not know, and I'll bring them up again, um, Tom Strobel, who is the, was the owner of, uh, of, um, Thunder, Thunder Bowl Lanes, they just did a major PBA tournament. Um, I went to his visitation today. Uh, he was probably one of the finest men I have ever met in my life. He was, um, a distinguished attorney, he was a, a well-known, uh, bowler who is in the Bowling Hall of Fame. Uh, he is an excellent, was an excellent golfer, wonderful family man, and I had the pleasure of going to a couple of the, um, sessions at Thunder Bowl when, when the tournament was in. And I marveled at the crowds that were there, and the fact that as this man walked through them, he knew virtually everyone there, and they knew him. And, and the smile on his face and the smiles on their faces was incredible to see. He was kind, he was generous, he was good-hearted, he cared about people, he cared about his employees. I talked to several of them today, and they could not believe the fact that they had just had a, a meeting with him on, uh, Wednesday, and he was fine. Um, the more I walked around the funeral home, the more I realized that it was unfortunate that I did not know the man longer. Um, he was incredible. And speaking of history, uh, when I was there as his guest, there's a room in the back of Thunder Bowl, and I, I thought to myself, somebody needs to talk to this man about the history of this structure, because there's a room there that's, that's like an apartment, where apparently one of the pro bowlers who came down from Traverse City used to live there. It's got a bedroom, and a bathroom, and a living room where his TV was. Um, at any rate, I, I will miss him greatly. Detroit Lions, uh, we jumped on that, and Mr. Kibbe and I had a great meeting with their finance director and their, uh, facilities director. Uh, they were kind of, you want to talk about surprises, uh, they were as surprised as we were to have read the article about the Lions relocating. Um, it's probably something they've talked about, they know that they've outgrown their facility. Uh, apparently their employment has increased dramatically since they first moved in, and they said that some of the tents that you see outside the facility are now where they're putting, um, uh, material that they used to store inside, because they've converted all of the interior to office space. But there is nothing that's imminent, and we talked to them about possibilities, uh, they are going to remain in touch with us. In fact, I anticipate that they will be getting back to us at some point and inviting us to kind of take a tour of their facilities. And so I can tell you that, uh, we have been in contact, there is nothing that's imminent, and if nothing else, uh, rest assured that that building and the land will remain there, because as soon as a few people heard about, oh, they're going to be moving, they were contacting, saying, hey, we're interested in your building, we'd like to buy that. So, um, uh, the tax base will still remain there. Um, again, appreciate the comments, um, many of the things I saw and read were, were things that had crossed our minds that we have discussed. And, um, thank you all for coming, um, you have made Mr. Marcos quite happy, and he's probably going to smile all the way home. And with that, um, may I, uh, ask for a motion to adjourn?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lally. Second by Mr. Marcos. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you all, seven thirty-four.